May I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. May I have your attention, please, and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for February 5th, 2024. The first matter on the agenda is the approval for January 18th, 2024 minutes. Any of the board members have any comments, corrections?
I was absent, so I won't be voting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
My second motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. So tonight, we have Central Street, then we have West Fourth Street, West Fifth Street, and Mobyn Street. Does anybody here for Princeton Boulevard this evening? Well, okay, all right. So we'll start off with special permit nine Central Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Massa Staffing Solutions LLC to open a professional office in the ground floor of the existing building at the above address. The subject property is located in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. The proposal requires a special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Article 12.7 of Lowell Ordinance. Actually, that was a typo, which should be Article 12.8. So Peter, will you correct that or should I go? I spoke with Dylan about it today, and he just said he made a mistake when he typed it in. So may we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. My name is Jose Cruz. I'm Executive Vice President for Massa Staffing. We've been in business since 2015. We've grown from two initial branches to 80 across the country. We're a local company, and we're looking to move to downtown Lowell. We are in on Phoenix Street in Lowell. We've been there for nine years, so we're looking to move downtown.
So I know one of the comments that we received earlier that staff wanted to have you give us a new set of drawings, which you did?
Yes.
Anything else you want to add, sir?
No, we would just like to be considered and approved so we can get going. We employ a lot of people from the community, and downtown will be a lot better to get this done than where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, I'll open up to see if anybody from the public wants to be heard. Anybody like to speak in favor of nine Central Street? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition for nine Central Street? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? Board members have any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Absolutely, Mr. Fichette, excuse me.
Just, Mr. Cruz, just a couple of questions. How many people are you looking to employ?
On any given year, we have at least 1,000 people employed. Internally, my staff runs between five and seven people.
Okay. And then do the people that you employ, do they come to that location?
They come to our location, and, you know, they go through the process to be hired applicants, and we assign them to different companies, and then those companies in turn turn on to hire them after 90 days, whatever the contractual agreement is, and that's how we operate.
And the reason I ask the question is, and it's been a trend, right, so this is retail space, you know, right on a main road within the downtown. But if you look at other key retail space locations within the downtown, they've transitioned to nonprofits. CTI occupies first-floor space, the Bar Marche Building, you know, that went from Bar Marche to Jordan Marsh to Macy's to Bonza Noble, and then La Boniche, and then to CTI. There's Workforce Board that's also occupying first-floor space. So it's in keeping with what's going on. I like the fact that there actually is bringing people into the downtown, people that want to work, people that are looking for a job. Hopefully, they'll get a coffee. Hopefully, they'll have lunch at one of the places there. So in a way, it may add some traffic to be able to spur some retail development or expansion somewhere within the downtown.
On any given year, in our Lowell location, where we at, that it's not really accessible as much as downtown would be, we probably have an excess of 3,000 to 4,000 people come through our offices every year.
Yeah. No, I mean, we need more traffic. We've got, you know, we have a couple of larger institutions that move their whole operations out of downtown. We have some others that since COVID, they have most of their workforces working remotely, and we need traffic downtown.
Yeah, we don't do remote.
Yeah, no, that's good, and that's why I wanted to make sure that's the case.
It is the case. We do not do remote.
I think it'll complement, like I said, I would love, all those spaces I mentioned, I would love to see retail space there, but at the end of the day, if there's nobody coming to buy your product, we've got to create, we've got to create some more activity to help develop that. So I have no objection to the proposal, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Caleb, any questions, comments?
Let's see. So I see that you didn't submit an elevation of the storefront, which Economic Development also...
Floor plan for the storefront?
Well, floor plan I see, but elevation, which is, which is fine. I just want to, I want to ask whether there will be any changes to storefront, like, or more or less...
The storefront of the building will not be touched, only the interior, a piece of wall being removed, and an office being built inside, although the space will be wide open, but not all going to windows, only the original signs.
Okay. Can we just have your name for the record, please, sir?
What?
Can we just have your name for the record?
Oh, Derek Kittle.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, okay, yeah, I see the shadows of the previous retail there, so... Oh, okay, great. Okay.
Without all going to windows, we want it to be wide open, no curtains, no drapes, no blinds.
And maybe, okay, and maybe even asking owner also, like, usually...
You want to get a better look?
Everybody wants to look, it's okay.
So usually, you also have an open kind of office that's very visible, and you see people working in there?
You see people at their desk working.
Okay, great.
Very friendly customer service kind of approach when people come in. So everything is open, you know, everybody's open, everybody's part of the...
I think it looks to me, thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Sinead, any questions?
My questions have been answered, thank you.
Allison, any questions?
Yep, same, thank you.
Okay. So what's the request for the board? So this requires a special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application, and based on the representation that there'll be no change to the facade of the building as represented here, other than the signage, so.
Okay, so we have a motion made, made in second on the floor?
I'll second it.
Sinead, second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Hearing any in opposition? None. Motion carries. Good luck, we wish you well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, so we have a definitive subdivision of 330 Princeton Boulevard. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Etin Dos Santos for the property located above address. The subject property is located in traditional two-family zoning district. The applicant is seeking to subdivide the existing lot and construct a two-family dwelling on a newly created lot. The newly created lot will not meet the minimum frontage requirement per Section 5.1 of the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. The project requires definitive subdivision approval from the Lowell Planning Board under the Lowell Subdivision of Regulations. Our planning department received a letter back in January, was addressed to one of our staff members in planning department, Mr. Dylan Ricker, from Nick Landry, and it says, this is in regards to 330 Princeton Boulevard, application withdrawal. Please use this letter as a formal request to withdraw without prejudice the permit application for the above address. Please contact the office with any additional questions or needed information. Thank you, Nick Landry. So we have a request for withdrawal without pressured, excuse me, without prejudice. Board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment. I mean, we typically honor a request to withdraw without prejudice. I just, at least for the record, this was not a very good proposal. And I just want to read from the Lowell Planning Subdivision and Land Use Regulations. It says lots on page 12 on the lot size and frontage. All lots shall be of such size and dimensions and have frontage to meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance of Lowell. Only one residential building may occur on each lot unless approval is given by the board. You know, it's just, once again, they were looking for multiple variances. My understanding is they withdrew from the zoning board of appeals. They weren't even looking to access from the actual address of the property on Princeton Boulevard, but between two buildings. And I, I would have, I guess I would be willing to approve the withdrawal without prejudice, but I could be persuaded to just deny the application as presented, Mr. Chairman. But I think, I think it needs to be communicated to the applicant. If they intend to come back with something, they better come up with something a lot better than what's presented here on the plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Any other board members have any comments? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw with prejudice.
Second the motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
With prejudice or without prejudice?
Without prejudice, okay, without prejudice, without prejudice.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
No.
Okay, so that carries four in favor, one against. So moving along, we have a site plan approval and special permit for 15 West Fourth Street, and 16 West Fifth Street, and 14 West Fourth Street. So this is a continuation from our last meeting, and all three of these pieces of property are basically connected to each other. So what we're going to do is I'm going to read all three of them, and then we will let the applicant be heard, then we'll listen to the public, and then we'll take a vote with them one at a time.
Mr. Chairman, before you read that into the record, I will be recusing myself on all three items, as well as the following application as well that Mr. Marlowe will be presenting to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, I also have to recuse myself since I was absent at the last meeting.
I'm sorry?
I also have to, I can't vote on this matter. Is that right?
On, oh, okay, thank you. Because you went present at the last meeting, that's right.
Correct.
Okay, so that leaves Caleb, myself, and Allison. Okay, okay, so site plan review, special permit, 15 West Fourth Street, building one. Peter Marlowe has applied to the planning board seeking site plan review and special permit approval to construct a 15-unit residential building at the above address. The subject property is located in the neighborhood business zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the planning board per Section 11.4 for development with greater than three residential units, and special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Article 12.1 and Section 11.3 for development with greater than 10 residential units. Site plan review and special permit on 16 West Fifth Street, building number two. Peter Marlowe has applied to the planning board seeking site plan review and special permit approval to construct a nine-unit residential building at 16 West Sixth Street. The subject property is located in the neighborhood business zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the Lowell Planning Board for development with greater than three residential units, and special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Article 12.1 and Section 11.3 for development with seven to 10 residential units. Site plan review and special permit, 14 West Fourth Street, building number three. Peter Marlowe has applied to the planning board and zoning board of appeals seeking site plan review and special permit approval to construct a 15-unit residential building at 14 West Fourth Street. The subject property is located in the neighborhood business zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the planning board per Section 11.4 for development with greater than three residential units, and special permit approval from the planning board per Article 12.1 and Section 11.3 for development with greater than 10 residential units. At our last meeting, Mr. Marlowe went through and gave us the presentation for all three of the buildings. The planning board members discussed in detail the parking situation, the landscaping situation, the stormwater situation, and at that point in time, we were waiting for comments from the fire department. So at that point in time, the motion was made to continue it to tonight's evening, to hopefully get some feedback from the fire department. And I'll leave it at that, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Marlowe.
All right. Good evening. Peter Marlowe, 258 West Manchester Street, Lowell, Mass.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, I think you may need four members to vote on a special permit, although you've been doing this a little longer than I have, so I just want to raise that.
With the new rules that were changed last year by the governor's office, we can get a special permit with three.
You can, okay, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to confirm that. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, so now we don't need the four, they changed it to three. They also changed it on someone of majority voting on the zoning too now. So we got that in writing last year as the governor changed that. So we can go forward with the three members voting tonight, Mr. Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
We good?
Yeah, we're good.
All right. So with me tonight is Jim Heller. Jim deals directly with all the financial aspects of this project, both in with planning and development. He's been with me right from the beginning, been working on this project for over two years. We met about three weeks ago with the board, that's everybody that's here this evening, and as of today, at 12 o'clock, we got the final approval for the fire, from the fire department. I have sent over all the information to three people that are on the stormwater board, but I was hoping to get it done, but Dylan told me that's not a necessity. He said as long as it goes through his office when it's done. But all the information, all the water drainage, all the stormwater, has been sent over to Gordon and the engineer's office. So they've had that since last week. I sent an email in, I actually talked to Dylan, and he said that can be a contingency, a contingent upon, so don't worry about that. So the only thing really I have to be in front of you tonight for is the big one, which was the fire department, and working with a new engineer that I hired, along with Pat Flaherty, we were able to solve the issues that they had.
I'm just pulling up the letter from the fire department.
That's fine.
A second. So we get a memo from Peter, like you said, it was, I got it up, I think it was around 2:30 today. Please find attached a letter from the fire department approving East End Club proposals. Feel free, and... Let me just pull this up here. Okay, so I'm just going to read a letter from the fire department into the record. In accordance with 780 CR 107 and 527 CRs 1.7111, the Lowell Fire Prevention Bureau has received a reviewed site plan for the project at the present side of East End Club on West Fourth and West Fifth Street. The site plan is approved with conditions. Mr. Marlowe has agreed to work with the Fire Prevention Bureau to address grade issues for the driveway adjacent to the present building to make it more accessible to emergency apparatus while maintaining access to the upper garage for residents. Parking spots seven and eight from the original plan for the West Fifth Street building were removed for better access. Mr. Marlowe has also agreed, in addition to the required NFPA 13 sprinkler system in all three buildings, he will add fire-rated egress pathways for the hallways slash stairways, as well as stand pipes to the proposed building located on West Fifth Street due to further access concerns. I am approving this site plan with the understanding that these conditions will be met before project completion, and that was signed up by the deputy fire department, I think it was Rob Crabtree. That's the letter you received as well, up by...
That's the letter I received, and on top of that, just so you know, stand pipes normally aren't required for certain height buildings. We put them in every single building that we have sprinklers in.
Okay.
We put them on every floor and every hallway, so as a standard safety feature.
So, excuse me, so the conditions that he outlined, you're in agreement with?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, just so we know, that was the letter that we were hoping to see from the fire department. Anything else you want to say, sir?
No, I think that's everything.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'm going to open it up to the public, and we'll start it one at a time. Anybody here this evening want to speak on 15 West Fourth Street? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? Anybody who want to speak on, I'm sorry, yes, sir, just come to the microphone, state your name and address?
Hi, good evening. My name is George Prokop, 31 Fremont Street. I just want to correct that I'm not speaking in favor or opposition, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to come to the last meeting. I know that Mr. Marlowe does splendid work, and he's very mindful of his projects, and I've always appreciated that, the good things that he's done. What I am concerned about in this particular project is the traffic congestion. I'm not sure that this was addressed or asked. So in speaking to several neighbors that abuts the property, the thing that concerns them is not the project, it's not the parking, because Mr. Marlowe's taken good care of that. But the congestion and the size of those streets, I'm not sure that, what is it, the TDM, Traffic Demand Management, addressed the congestion of that traffic, as it is now, and then when that project is done. So I'm just here tonight hoping that the traffic engineer, and I don't know if this comes from the planning board or if it goes through city council, but if they can do a study to look at that, at those streets, because West Fifth, West Fourth are two-way streets, and it's almost like road rage when you're driving there, because if you're facing two people, nobody wants to move on the side so that the other one can pass. It's unfortunate, but the streets are that small that two cars cannot pass each other. So a lot of the residents who are concerned about that project is when they're going out of their building, their properties, and whether it's rush hour in the mornings, whether it's rush hour at night, trying to get in from work, it's going to be a conundrum. So the concern is if the traffic can be addressed, and if that means, as a suggestion, that making those streets one-way so that the traffic can flow evenly, that can mitigate a lot of the issues that the neighbors are addressing. Unfortunately, I wasn't around, so I couldn't get signatures, but this is the things that a lot of the residents brought up, that something needs to be done about the traffic. I know Mr. Marlowe, and I know the work that he's done, so that's why I said, even though I said opposition, it's not opposition. It's just about who can address the issue of the traffic, because when this project is done, and even though the project itself has taken care of the parking, right, and you have a lot of bike racks and bikes, but if you had all these bike racks, you don't necessarily need parking. So that tells me you are going to have a lot of cars, and those new cars, new residents, will also be trying to get onto Bridge Street to go to work or go wherever they need to go, to go to schools, and it's going to be as it stands now. Because as it stands right now, just getting from one end of Bridge Street to the next can take you a half hour. So just, again, an influx. We want development, we want people in Lowell, but we need to consider some practical measures that would help with the traffic. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else want to, excuse me, anybody else want to speak on that matter? If not, I'm just going to continue to read the other matters. Okay, the other one would be 16 West Fifth Street. Okay, so the other one would be 16 West Fifth Street. Anybody want to speak in favor of that? In favor? In favor, in favor? Or in opposition? Yes, sir. If you want to address them all to all three, we'll definitely take into consideration, because all the notes we got were combined for all three of them too. So we can consider it, what you're, oh, gotcha, all right. So I just have to read all three off to be followed up etiquette rules, but, so, well noted, and the next one would be 14 West Fourth Street. Anybody want to speak in favor? In favor, in favor? Or against, or against, or against? So, anybody have any comment on all three? So, none at this time? Okay, um, let's see, so at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members, if they have any questions. Caleb, can I start with you?
Sure, so I recognize the, the fire department letter. One clarification that I wish to ask about, so the letter mentions parking spots seven and eight were removed, but I, I see one of the fire access plans still have them, so is, is the record is that they are not there?
Well, so, I don't want to get into too deep with this. The engineer, Pat Flaherty, is going through some medical issues right now, he's actually having an operation on Wednesday, and he sent me the DWG drawing to send to my fire engineer up in New Hampshire, and when he sent it, he sent the earlier version before we changed all the plans. So we've agreed to take seven and eight back out of there. So the fire plan will be that plan that we've submitted, but there'll also be a new, a, a plan that we already have showing the parking in the right locations. So there'll be two, two plot plans submitted.
Okay.
So seven and eight will come out.
Okay, um, I think, oh, well, we might put it into condition, so just to be clear about the site plan that we're approving.
Say, what's that?
So I might add it as a condition to the site plan of, I didn't figure out which building, but like...
Well, it's, it would be one and two, it would be the site plan for one and two.
So, so it's okay, I put that as a condition?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Just to be clear, because I mean...
And building three, the site plan did not change.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. So I think that satisfies the, the fire department letter, as far as I can concern, I can, I read it. Think about the, the traffic conditions, so I, we do have the traffic engineers look at the TM plan, and staff comments was positive, so I think, I think congestion's kind of, this would add to it, but I think that seems to be like a, a area issue, that, that's kind of happened in the form of the neighborhoods.
The new club entrance, keep in mind, the new club entrance is gonna come in from West Fifth Street, and the club, over the years, probably gave the most traffic on West Fourth Street, but the new entrance will be coming in on West Fifth Street and turning down, turning in and either going into the upper level garage, or the spots right around the, the existing club.
So, um, I don't know how other members think about it, I mean, we could ask the engineer, the traffic engineer to take a look and think about whether there could be improvement to that stretch of, you know, that part of neighborhood. I guess it's just a request beyond just this case, if, if, I don't know, Chairman, I don't know if we have that ability to.
Yeah, we can reach out and make a recommendation, and they take a look at it. Obviously, if it was gonna be any one-way street, either way, as this gentleman requested, that would have to be approved by the city council.
Yes.
But I mean, if the city traffic engineer did take a look at it and felt it was necessary, they could, the city department could bring it forward.
Yeah, but, but I just wanted to say on the record that they don't have problem with, with this particular proposal from, from staff comments that, that we've read, so I think that's a discussion beyond the, the, this application at this point, but...
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, let's see, I, I remember there is a landscaping plan involved, and, and I forgot quite well, like, whether you're working with DPD staff to...
I've already sat down with Dylan, we brought the big sheet in, we sat at the desk, and I, we had him, we went right over what trees they want, where they want them, and a hedge in front of building number three to block the street a little bit. We've agreed to that, I just haven't had a chance to draw it. All my focus right now has been on the fire, safety.
Okay.
Yep, but that'll be submitted before permits are issued.
Okay, so I, I don't know, again, fellow members, whether we want to see the plan after, and ask staff to give us the plan, and maybe after, just so that we have an idea of what we approved, but that's, that's not quite a condition, just a request to the staff. I, I think the condition will continue to be, that you work with TBD to, to finalize the landscaping plan to their satisfaction. I think, I think that will be a condition, since you haven't finalized the plan, I, I believe verbally you're, you're good, but like, they haven't seen the final plan, so I would still suggest to include that condition.
Yeah, in the past, I've, I've always sat down with planning and development on all the buildings, and we went over what, exactly what trees, what size, and, like, they, he made a few variations, so I liked that we worked together on it, so it's not an issue.
Okay, yeah, I take your word, I just, since there is no final plan, again, it's just to clarify, just to include that, and that's, that's all my questions, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Allison, any questions, comments?
Nope, I agree, you know, we talked a lot about it all last time, and nice to see the fire, even the two spaces being removed, we knew that that was gonna be part of the case, and there was more than ample parking, so expected that, so it looks good. I, I hear and absolutely see the, the issue with traffic, and think that it's separate from this, and hopefully we can do sort of our part to send along that recommendation, even though it's outside of this.
Yeah, I mean, I was hopeful that we got that letter today at 2:30, because obviously that was my biggest concern last time.
Yeah, yeah, we were down to the Y.
You know, we, at least I've never voted to approve the project until we have the, the, the fire department approval, because under site plan, as you know, they can come in and make all these recommendations, but then they could wipe out half your parking, so.
Yep.
We have to see what effect that has on the other matters, once the fire department...
So seven and eight will be eliminated from that.
I mean, they could have come out and said, we don't want this, we don't want this, and then if we've approved it, then all of a sudden, we're going by how many parking space we think are, but then the fire department may say, we have to wipe out a lot of them, so that's always my main concern. So I think, what we talked about last time, and before we concluded that, was we were looking at, like, as Caleb said, you know, working with DPD for landscaping, and even the deputy director had comments, you know, for the landscaping intent between the parking lot and West Fifth Street, to buffer the sidewalk and that parking surface, so obviously that would be, you know, the landscaping with DPD. Then we mentioned, in your agreement, that we, if we said a condition as well for, to get the stormwater permit, because you have to get that regardless, was it?
All the calculations have been given to them, yep.
And then, so, as well as tonight, would be the approval from the fire department, as indicated in that letter that was addressed today to us.
Yep.
And you can, and you said you were fine with that? And the other one I, question I have, and I know you brought it up last time, I just wanted to refresh my memory on this one. So you had a gentleman, who was it, who did the fire thing for you? What was his name? Peter?
Kira.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we read through all that, I know you submitted that last time when we discussed it, little briefly, waiting here back in the fire department. But one thing he noted in the bottom, and I just want to make sure we're still on board this, in regards to street parking, we are concerned with encroachment on the curb cut at each building. We would like to make the recommendation that the city designate these areas as no parking fire lane areas. The owner is willing to procure and install these signs as specified by the city. Is that something you're in agreement with?
Well, that was early on, and if, if the deputy feels they want that, we will do it, it was a suggestion.
Okay.
To the fire department, but they didn't follow back, they didn't, Crab, Deputy Crabtree didn't come back on that, but if they want to do it, yeah, we can paint it yellow and mark it out.
Yeah, and I think if you do that, though, you might have to get the city council approval for a fire lane in front of the building, right?
Yeah, but that was a suggestion, trying to get this approved without bringing the trucks onto the property, but now we've shown them that we can bring the trucks onto the property.
Okay, so if that issue come up in the future, you'd be willing to work with the fire department?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that we, you know, have a couple letters here from, one there was a proposal from yourself, and now we have one from the, from the city. Okay, so, those are the only questions I have, like I said, we discussed a lot last time, and the main concern was the fire department, which we finally got the okay with, so, so what we need is two votes on each project.
Chairman, I will make a motion to...
So we'll start with the first one, which is building one, 15 West Fourth Street.
To approve Building 1, 15 West Fourth Street for its, do we do a special permit first?
Either one, whichever you like to do, site plan, special permit.
Special permit first, okay.
Or a special permit, okay.
With the conditions, so the applicant will work with DPD on the landscaping, to the, to the department staff satisfaction, and then fire, I think we addressed, work with the storm, to get the storm permit, stormwater permit.
And then the recommendations from the fire department to be included?
Yes, the recommendation from the fire department to be included, including removal of space seven and eight on this one, I think the building two as well, but we'll get to that, and also stand pipe, right? Let's see.
The stand pipe is part of the fire recommendation.
Yeah, and then the other recommendation.
Yeah, so if we just leave it as the fire department's recommendation, that whole letter would be encompassed by recommendations.
Yes, but I do want to emphasize the space seven, eight, since, I mean, it's important to a site plan.
Okay.
Is there anything else? I think we're good, so with those three conditions.
Okay, so, a motion on the fourth for the special permit from Caleb, with three conditions. We need a second. I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none? So the special permit is approved, three in favor and none against.
And I will make another motion.
For the site plan?
For the site plan, with the same three conditions.
Second.
I will second, second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes yes, any opposition, hearing none? So the site plan and special permit have both been approved for 15 West Fourth Street. So now we're going to permit the 16 West Fifth Street.
I make a motion to approve the special permit for 15 West Fourth Street, no, 16 West, wait.
Fifth Street, yeah, that's building number two.
16 West Fifth Street, building number two.
No.
You already did the first two, the third one.
What was that one we have? I just want to make sure the wording's right.
Okay, so on our agenda, the second one is 16 West Fifth Street.
Building number one is on West Fifth.
Correct, it says here, the first one we did...
I think this might be in reverse.
Oh, okay, so 15 West Fourth Street, we just voted on, right?
So that's to be...
15 West Fourth is building number two.
Ah. Oh, okay, so what they put here on, on our thing was reversed, gotcha, okay. So we just voted for 15 West Fourth Street.
Yeah, I, I think it's more important to street address, which building, I think...
So we'll just knock off the building number, okay.
Okay.
So now we're gonna go on 16 West Fifth Street?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay.
So I make a motion to approve the special permit for 16 West Fifth Street with the same three conditions incorporating which, which...
Second.
Okay.
Which we did on West Fourth Street.
Yes, the same as the West Fourth Street, conditions.
Seconded.
Motion made in second, all in favor say aye, chair votes yes, any opposition, hearing none? So that carries for the special permit, three in favor, none against.
And I will make another motion to approve the site plan permit for 16 West Fifth Street with the same three conditions.
I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none, so that motion carries as well. So now we're down to 14 West Fourth Street.
Yep, and I will make a motion to approve the special permit for Four, 14 West Fourth Street with, I will restate the conditions, since this one is different, so to incorporate the fire department's comment and conditions, I think that one, we don't have to specify the space, since that one is, but, but the other things applies, work with DBT, DB, the Department of Planning and Development on the landscaping to their satisfaction, and also get the stormwater permit.
Motion made, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so that motion carries for the special permit?
Make a motion to approve the site plan permit for 14 West Fourth Street with the same three conditions.
Seconded.
Motion made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, now, three in favor, any opposition, hearing none? So that motion carries as well. So all three have been approved.
Thank you.
We wish you well, good luck, sir. And, oh, and by the way, I think, I think Caleb mentioned that we're gonna make a recommendation to see if the traffic engineer be willing to look at the congestion in that neighborhood, and whether they'd be willing to consider, whether any of those streets should be considered to be one-way, there'll just be a recommendation from us to ask her if she can look at that. Would that be acceptable to our board members?
Do we have to specify which street, or generally?
I'll just say...
West Fourth and West Fifth.
I would say basically, you know, I'm, I know they're tight, especially when the wintertime, and they, they get smaller, because I mean, we've drove up them, and we talked about it the last meeting, I mean, because two cars can't pass on, on either one of those streets, with two, with two cars parked in the snowbank there. So, but yeah, there'll be a recommendation, but we gotta have the recommendation from the full board, I think that would make some authority.
Let's say, let's say the, the streets around, around like...
This neighborhood?
This neighborhood, like, yeah, because I know there's third, I'm looking at the map.
Yeah.
Yeah, third and fourth go down to Joette Street, but then fifth doesn't, and then six is a bigger road, so it's like, we'll let the traffic engineer decide the scope, but like, yeah, around this neighborhood.
With specific mention of West Fourth and West Fifth, then?
Yeah, specifically, let's say, yes, specifically West Fourth and Fifth Street.
Okay, thank you, good luck, we wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you, sir. Okay, excuse me, moving along on the agenda, we have a site plan review, 145-149 Woburn Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Jose Robero to convert the property to a four-family residential use. The subject property is located in a traditional two-family zoning district. The applicant previously received approval from the zoning board of appeals to convert the use from a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. The proposal currently requires site plan review approval from the planning board per section 11.4 for four residential units on one lot. We have the applicant, please.
Hello again.
Hello.
Peter Marlowe, 258 West Manchester Street.
Go ahead, Billy, Mr. Marlowe.
I need my glasses, though.
Okay, take your time, oop, here my notes for this one.
With me tonight is Jose and Maria Robero. I met Jose probably about six, seven, eight years ago, when I did the, where the police station is on Bridge Street, and he came over to visit me, and he liked the way that we did things. So he asked me, at the time, he owned Romeo and Juliet's, the little trailer behind the Elliot on South Street, so he asked me, he says, what could you do with this? So I designed a building from there, I came in front of the ZBA, I came in front of you, and he built a beautiful building over there, we did an amazing job, it's a beautiful restaurant, it's well-done, and he's got four one-bedroom apartments above it. But the story behind it, and I'm gonna go a little bit into it, is Maria and Jose immigrated here from Brazil in 1980, they had three, three children, they raised them here, they bought the Woburn Street property. When they purchased the property, the front building had three apartments in it, and the back... When they purchased the property, the front building had three apartments in it and the back was a cottage in the back. So they remodeled everything, they lived in the cottages, they had permits to do everything, they lived in the cottage in the rear. The property is amazing. He, they keep their property really, really nice. They also, I'm gonna go back to this, but they, not only South Street, but they also own the former historic building, the Hanover Shoe Factory, Leather Shoe Company, next to the Elliott. That's where they now reside. They remodeled that, it took, during COVID, it took us three years to do that building. And I work with them closely, so I wanted to help them here. Steve Geary represented him on this at the ZBA back in 2020, May of 2020. So we've got the approval from the ZBA. So what happened was, he went to get a permit and they said that it wasn't a three-family in the front. It had been, always been a three-family. And so Dave Fuller came over with me. I, he called me up, I said, let me get the building inspector over. We walked through, he said, there's no, you know, he says, you gotta have two, enter, two means of egress. I said, just come over and take a look. Went up the back stairs, walked through the apartment, went down the front stairs. All egresses in the building, it's a three-story building, it's got three apartments, and then it's got the cottage where they originally lived in the back. Since then, they moved into the new historic building next to the Elliott, which is the Hanover Shoe. So it passed the zoning board of appeals, they agreed, we shoot, showed all the documents, Dave Fuller didn't have a problem. We showed everything that they had done. And maybe when they came over here with the language barrier, they didn't understand, but there were three families in the front building and there was one in the back. So they bought it figuring there was four there. So Steve Geary brings it, I asked Steve, it was a little involved, I says, can you handle this? And he said, yes. So Steve Geary brings it in front of the board, they give us the approval. Everything's done, three years go, two years go by, two and a half years go by. Jose goes down to pull a permit to repair the roof and in order to repair the roof, we have to take part of the deck because it goes up over the rubber roof or the old tower and gravel. They deny him the permit. And they denied him because there's, we have, there's now not three units, but there's four units, always have been there on the property. So Dylan explained to me that you have to come back in front of the planning board. And I don't know if it's something we missed, I don't know what it was. So here we are tonight, back in front of you, just to clean that up so he can get permits to do repairs on the building. And that's basically it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else want to speak? Um, does the applicant that you with tonight, Mr. Marlowe, want to speak as well or just your comments? Do they want to be heard as well or just yourself? No, I mean, the owners. Do they want to speak as well?
No.
Okay. All right. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody here tonight want to speak in favor of this project on 145, 149 Woburn Street? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? None? Anybody in opposition? Just come to the microphone, please, speak and speak once, one at a time. Just have your name and address, please.
Christine Burke. I live at 170, 161 Woburn Street, but I also own the lot 171. First, I want to bring up, I purchased that house, my house, in 1999. So I have seen this property and before that, I lived across the street at 154 Woburn Street. And my boyfriend at the time, going back to when I was early twenties, they, he lived in that property. He lived on the second floor. I want to clarify that that has, that front, two-unit front building was always two. It was never three. They added that. They added a third on a Fourth of July weekend, did it on a weekend. There was no permit. If there was a permit, I would have been here to say, I just want to see the plan. If he did it right, maybe I would have been okay with it. But as it stands right now, and this is why I was here, I added that because I can't believe the history was not accurate. Um, I agree with the city, it was always a two-family in the front. So when it came to, I guess when they were going for the, the, the deck on the third floor, I'm assuming that was what the last meeting was, I never got a notice and I should have gotten two notices. I should have had something mailed to me, I probably, I would have, I would have come. Um, so that was an issue. Another thing is, since it's been occupied, I've had issues with the privacy. If I'm in my backyard, there's people on the balcony of this third floor and I just feel like I'm on display. They sit on the stairs that, that go up, they sit there, they're, you know, I feel like I'm being stared at. I have zero privacy. If the stairs in the balcony were gone, I probably wouldn't care about the third floor, but I do. Because on top of this, we have a parking issue. Their residence is a pretty small property. And back before they added this third floor, before he purchased maybe, I'm, I'm not sure of the timeline there because I didn't know when the owners changed, I didn't know that. But they added, they paved pretty much the entire yard except the back corner. So they added parking spaces, six, I think. But they don't have enough parking for everyone that lives there because they park on the road, they park in front of my driveway, blocking my driveway. They park, they're, they have a seventh car that always parks diagonal and blocks the sidewalk in front of their unit. I, I, I'm just not okay with the additional people. They park on Carmine Street, across the street, they line the street with work vehicles. And I'm, I'm, it's people that live there and I understand they have another car, but it's a reason I don't think they should have four units there. It should go back to what it was grandfathered in as three. That's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Just your name and, and address, please.
My name is Amy and I'm a surrounding, abutting neighbor that lives behind.
And your last name, Amy, I'm sorry?
Is Porrier.
For, okay.
I've lived in the neighborhood for 18 years. I've always known that house and I stare out my back porch right to their house. I've always known that that, that house has always had, basically that lot, has always had a house in the front with two families and always had that, that cottage in the back. Since I've been there, it's always been a two-family with that third in the back and they put a addition up on the third floor, and again, not knowing if that was permitted or not. But I'm a neighbor and I'm, I am concerned with, you know, the loud music that it's bringing in, the people staring from the porches, which I have to agree, um, to all hours of the night. You know, it's privacy and it's, you know, it's really, it kind of creeps me out when I have neighbors staring over into my backyard. I've said things quite a few times. So that's my concern is how many, like, how many units that's zoned for right now? Because I feel like there's already, like, he has, you know, three families probably living in that front house already with three different floors, including that cottage area in the back. I feel like it's already has four places in it already. So my concern is, how many units is that zoned for right now? If right now it's, if they're looking for a fourth, I don't want them to put more construction up on that area. I'm already looking at a very tall, like, infrastructure there already. And that's basically my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer McManus at 153 Woburn Street, the lot right next door. I have to agree, I've been there for about 20 years and just to agree with everybody else that, um, I feel like it's always been a two-family in the front and the third in the back. Um, I was never aware of there being a third floor added or a third apartment. I did try to come to the last meeting, but, um, I guess I got re-scheduled and I was never notified when the new meeting was for that permit issue. So I never got to speak about that. But, um, it's, it's more of a privacy thing for us too. In the parking, I had to get a parking, um, sign for the front of my house so I didn't have to worry about not having my parking spot when I got home. Since then, it's been better with the parking sign there. But, um, it's just, it's just a lot of, uh, too many cars, too many people. For the street that we're on, most of them are two-family homes, I mean, two, two-floor, um, two-family apartments or housing. I have a single family, so it's, it's a lot. And, um, I had to add my own privacy fence on that side because of snow issues and, and just noise and traffic over there. And the, the, the way they did the driveway and everything, they don't have enough room to move the snow that they have when it does snow. And a lot of times, it gets pushed out into the street. I've said something a few times to the people that are doing it, but they don't seem to understand what I'm saying. Even a cop one time saw them doing it and told them to stop doing it and they still do it. Not every time, but a lot of times and it's the block in the driveway, um, the sidewalk. Pretty much the same thing everybody else already said. I would hope that it wouldn't be another apartment added to that space.
So I guess what they're requesting is, is they're not gonna add another apartment, but I guess they never got the approval to make it forward to begin with.
To go against the approval.
Yeah, so what they're looking for is to keep it as it is right now.
As it is, is it technically, legally, a three-family home in the front? Because as far as I could tell, there was two apartments, there's a basement and whatever they added to the third, the, the top floor.
So basically, it tells us that it's, um, non-conforming.
What does that mean?
That, that means that it's non-conforming by, under the regulations. So they received, they received an approval from the zoning board of appeals and I'm not sure, um, I need to make sure I got this right. Okay, the zoning board of appeals approved it back in May 12th of 2020.
That's the one I missed.
Okay, the zoning board granted approval without conditions. So they allowed the, they said it was non-conforming at the time and they allowed it to continue to be non-conforming to the regulations. So, I mean, let's check what else they're saying here.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Non-conforming, how could they keep it as non-conforming? Because they still read this.
Well, if it's non-conforming, they can come in and request a non-conforming use to be allowed and that's what happened, that the zoning board of appeals.
And is this what, can I say I'm fighting against that?
Sure. I'm just saying, they already approved the non-conforming use and that's why it's, they come in, did that back in the zoning board of appeals back in, well.
Does the non.
Again, I never got a notice of that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's not in the zoning board of appeals. It never came before us, I can tell you that. Yeah.
Does the non-conforming mean they can have as many apartments as they want in that house, in that thing?
No, no. So it only came before the zoning board of appeals. They said it was non-conforming and they allowed it to be that way. They approved it.
I feel like that does, that.
That doesn't make any sense.
That was what happened on the ZBA. Because these are the notes that we got from planning staff indicating that it's in the traditional two-family zone. The applicant is seeking to get final approval, board approval for existing use. And it says that the applicant is not seeking to add any additional units beyond what was approved by the zoning board back in May of 2020.
I have just a quick question on that, I'm sorry, I know we're all up here. Um, I know that was like a conforming, it was already done. Is that something that stays like that forever or is that something that can be challenged in the future for it? Just because I know that there's a lot of families living in that house. There's definitely three floors above ground and whatever's on the bottom floor. Not including that house in the back. So right now, it's like a, I mean.
It's considered four units.
Four, five family.
It's like a four or five.
Yeah. Um, they're telling us it's four. So I think, what, the three in the one building and one in the back?
Where's the third in the front building?
The front building that Mr. Marlowe said, that he was told, I don't know if he knew before, that it was an existing apartment on that third floor, that was absolutely not an existing third floor.
So they had it two, they put the third in, then they count the back as the fourth?
They put it on July 4th, I forget what year it was, 2013, 2013, without a permit, they did it on a weekend.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I mean, they approved that as is. Um, so the question is, it now comes before us because it should have been a site plan approval. So now after this period of time since 2020, they realized that they should have came before the planning board as well as just the zoning board of appeals.
So what goes on from now?
So they're asking for us to let them keep it as is, as a four unit.
And is it?
We are all against that. And can I just directly?
Sure, if you just want to give us your name and address, sir? Thank you.
My name's Harry McDonald. I live at 100 Acton Street, which is right behind the property. I didn't have a problem, like, it was just, I believe in doing things right. If they got a permit, we would have been notified, we could have came down, find out what they were gonna do and then we could have decided then. You know what I mean? But it just happened like in three days, done. And I'm like, what's gonna happen? And it was fine because he was living there with his family, but now it's not like that. Now it's anybody in and out, in and out, in and out. So, and there's cars all over the place. It's just, yeah. I don't have a problem with people doing what they want on their property, but I like to get things, do it, do it right. Get a permit and so everybody can hear what's gonna happen and, so. And the house in the back is not a cottage, it's a two-family Victorian. So I don't know why they call it a cottage.
So the one in the back, they call it a cottage, is what?
It's a, it's, it's a two-story house, Victorian house.
Yeah, I think, I was up there looking at it and I know they also submitted some.
Yeah.
Pictures, um, that was given to staff that, I know we took copies, but I put my, I have my pictures here somewhere. Wait, wait, I am attached, yeah. Um, yeah, so. Oh, is it? Yeah, they have pictures of the backyard, then they have the pictures of the front yard, these. Yeah, these areas all here. Then we could, then you got the four units, yeah.
I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
I think so that the people in the room understand and we fully understand what we're voting on tonight. The use is already approved because the zoning board approved the non-conforming use and we're only reviewing the site plan. So we're not approving the non-con, we're not even voting on the non-conforming use tonight. Is that correct?
Right, basically, to make it a four-family, it went to the zoning board for the use. The problem was, staff or, you know, whatever at the time, didn't realize that any time a property becomes four units or more, it also needs site plan review. So the use is done, the site plan just also needs to be approved.
Yeah, so we're not even voting on the non-conforming use tonight, that's not before us.
But I want to.
Go ahead, Caleb.
To think out loud. We will be reviewing it with the site plan requirements, correct? Criteria?
Right. Yeah, it's, it's the same as any other site plan review you guys would do.
And my understanding is like, uh, pretty much what seems like all the submitted materials is kind of just as is. Like, correct? I mean, I receive a plot plan, for example, that's just a plot plan. I don't see any site plans, so I assumes, so maybe it's to Mr. Marlowe, is that, I assume that things will be pretty much what they are right now, how, how they look today.
Maybe a question for later, I don't know.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, yep.
I, I'd just like to address three things. I went, we went through all of this. Dave Fuller got involved, we went through all the permits and everything. They even showed permits for doing remodeling on that third floor. They showed everything, we had everything down, Dave looked at everything, he walked through the property with me. Okay, there wasn't an issue there. Now, I want, I want to understand something. As far as people hanging around up on the upper porch, it's been vacant for three months because we're waiting to do that repair. There's a leak in the roof and we're waiting for this meeting so we can get the permit to do the repair. Second of all, I only have one copy, but I have a certified plot plan. There's eight parking spaces on the property. I'm gonna submit this to you so you can have this.
You can, you can, just give it to Peter and we'll take a look at it, we'll show it to you.
Yeah, I think that's in the materials, I saw that.
There's eight, excuse me, I'm on the, I've got the floor.
Yeah.
There's eight parking spaces on the plan, always have been. There's six on one side.
Right.
And two on the other.
Yeah.
Now, the Roberos, the Roberos have a very tight, uh, with the Brazil, they're very tight with the Brazilian community. So most people are living in that, how the Brazilian people. Same as upstairs, South Street, the, uh, the, the restaurant is owned by the Brazilian families. So they, they just, that's their community, okay? But we did address it. As far. As far as to say that the back cottage, it's a cottage, it's a, it's not, it's not a Victorian, it's a cottage, okay? It's not a big house. But there's four families living there, there's eight parking spaces. That's the main thing that I want to address. And we went through all of this with the zoning board of appeals. And when someone says, "Oh, I couldn't make that meeting," this meeting was continued three times. We met, they continued it to get some more information, they continued it again, and they voted unanimously on the third meeting. It was with Steve Gary.
And I'm looking at the floor plans. How many bathrooms are there in each of the units?
How many what?
Bathrooms.
How many bathrooms?
Third floor, two. Third floor, three bathrooms.
Three bathrooms.
Fourth floor, two bathrooms.
Yep. And then the cottage, what does the cottage have?
Three bathrooms.
Three bathrooms. Now...
Bathrooms, right, bathrooms.
One of the, one of the conditions why we got continued with Dave Fuller was, he said, "I want nothing in the basement." He said, "You can use it?" Because what, you know what it looked like is, in the Italian and the Brazilian communities, they always have two kitchens. They have one that they keep nice, and they have one where they do all the cooking in the basement. He made us pull that out. He said, "Just get rid of that." And so we did. We did everything that the building department wanted, and it went in front of the board, and it was voted on unanimously.
Just want a quick clarification. I think there's, I think Caleb was asking about bedrooms, and you answered bathrooms. So I just wanted to clarify that question answer.
That was bathrooms you asked.
Oh, bathrooms.
Bedrooms, he's asking.
Third floor.
There are one bathroom on each.
I thought so, I'm saying, why do you get so many? So one bathroom on each floor. One bathroom on each.
But you were talking about bathrooms.
I thought he said bathrooms.
Yeah. Right, so, so, all right, this is a good...
Okay, let's go back to bedrooms. How many bedrooms on the third floor?
On the third floor, two.
Two. Second floor?
Three.
First floor?
Two.
And then the cottage have three?
Three, because they had three children. That's where they raised their kids.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Two questions.
I just told the ten bedrooms.
That sounds like three, 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 two, two.
Yep.
Yeah. I think they want to...
This is quick. If, if it's vacant right now, why was someone today, this afternoon, hanging out the window, smoking a cigarette off the third floor?
They just, just, the vacant three months.
Okay.
Did you see the parking?
Yes.
Yes, we have a copy here.
There's always a car before number one.
Uh, just a second.
Pulling up, yeah, we have a copy, but he has it on the computer. Yeah, yeah. So he has, one, two, three, four, five, six on the left side, and two on the right side.
There's always a car parked at number one, that's against the hole and blocks the sidewalk. Always, every day, in the picture. And there's also the parking, oh, the front door, which is required.
Okay.
In terms of missing the meetings, we were never notified of the rescheduled dates, so I for sure would have sent to them if I...
Well, you, they don't have to notify you for the rescheduled dates. They're required to notify you. Like, same as if you come before us tonight, do, we have to notify you. If we continue it tonight, we don't go out and do another mailing and notify everybody again. Once it's been continued from a public meeting, the notification period, it's that aside, if it's continued, and continued from the original meeting. So, I mean, it wasn't before us, though I can't speak for the zoning board of appeals, what the notification is. I know they usually have to give out, notify all the abuddies, and they advertise it, and they put it in the paper, and they have to do it twice, like they do while on meetings as well, for notification. But I'm not sure how the notification works, but that's the procedure that's done. Usually, staff is the one who double checks it and makes sure all the mailings are out, and makes sure the advertisement is legal and the paper leaves twice, two weeks separation periods in between. So, okay, so, let's get back. Caleb, do you have any further questions? Or I'll give you the floor since you've been asking questions right along.
So, so, we recognize the ZBA have, have approved the units, so I think that's, that's kind of bygone question. I, I think I, I could see that there's concern with parking. Now, there are four units, so as I say, each unit technically have two parking space, but like, they are relatively large units, so if anyone have born two cars, then they go to park somewhere. Now, there are places they shouldn't be parking, and also, parking certainly have to, you know, you respect your neighbor. So I, that's not really a zoning thing, but I, I think that's the challenge there, that is that, like, I, I think the applicant need to show, like, you know, how to handle parking properly, and then so that you can adequately meet the parking demand of, of your tenants, right? So, so I'm thinking about that. I don't, I think I'll, I'll keep the discussion open to other members and think through this. I think regarding privacy concerns, it's on the third floor, has a balcony. Again, I think, I think they have to work with the neighbors to work that out. I mean, usually, building design is kind of beyond our, like, purview when it comes to balcony, so I'll also leave that to other members to discuss about that. I'm done for now, Chairman.
Okay. Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
So, if, you've seen the pictures of the cottage in the back. It's amazingly landscaped. It's beautiful. If, for some reason, I just spoke to them, if the city, if you, if they wanted more parking, you could tear down the fence, but you'd be getting rid of the green area that everybody wants. So that's what I'm pointing out. There is more space to be able to go, or on the right side, where seven and eight are, you could hot-top further in, and it could be stack bike, stack parking. But then it becomes just a giant parking lot. So there is the availability to put in, you know, two more on the right if they're stacked, and take the fence down and go into the green area. But personally, I would never want to see the green area. It's an amazing little back area, you know? It's got gazebo's, it's got cupolos, it's beautiful. Thank you. Shanay, any questions, comments?
Can I just say one crucial thing? As of the privacy, as of neighbors that are surrounding, what can we do to make sure and assure that we're not being stared at, the music is not blaring, there's bottles clanking all night? Like, what can we do to make that a respectful area? If the, if they're not there? I've gone over there many times. Walked over there, knocked on doors. I mean, you can bang on many doors, and you're not going to get anywhere.
There's really not much you can do. I mean, if you have bad neighbors, it can happen anywhere, anyplace. I'm sympathetic, I mean, no doubt about it.
No, no, and we've just been there for 18 years, and we have a great crew and a great area, and it's just, it's a concern.
Oh, definitely. I hear you loud and clear.
You know, going outside, and then all of a sudden, just having someone stare at you while they're smoking a cigarette off their porch, or even looking into surrounding backyards, staring at, "Oh, that looks like a nice pool." It's, it's concerning, you know what I mean? There's a lot of young kids in the neighborhood, and have people staring over a patio at a girl who looks cute in a bathing suit, is a little concerning.
Yeah, but I mean, if they're on...
And underage, you know?
If they're on their property and they're staring at people, really, I'm trying to think of what enforcement board in the city could do something, but...
Yeah, and I haven't, and I know...
I mean, you call the police, they're going to say, "They hurt anybody, touch anybody?" I mean, if the music is too loud at night, there is a, we do have ordinance for how loud you can play music, but, you know, it's a matter of what time of night it is, you know, whether the police would, you know, talk to them if it was, you know, too loud to disturb the neighbors.
And I try to be respectful as well, you know what I mean? Like, if it's over a few hours, fine, it's your property, absolutely, I want everyone to enjoy. But I just absolutely want things to be done right.
Sure.
And I just, I know there was a lot of meetings beforehand. I myself, I went to one, it was rescheduled, but I never got the other information. I would have been here already to, to stand up again. But it's just a concern. If that's already a permit that went through, there's nothing else that we can do as surrounding neighbors, right? We just have to let it be.
Basically, your last recourse is right here, right now.
Okay.
That time is it. You know, like, the ZBA made the decision, and from that, you have an appeal period, which obviously lasted a long time ago, if it was almost four years ago, so...
Okay. So there's no appeal or anything like that we can do?
No, nothing under the ZBA, it's just a matter of, your last cry is right here, right now, I guess.
All right, no, I think you...
I mean, some of the things, I understand what you're saying, but it, I mean, if you have a neighbor you're not satisfied with it, it, you know, the question for us is a zoning issue, do they meet the criteria of a site plan, which, you know, and I know, you know, it's nice to have good neighbors, and it's, I'm very uncomfortable to have neighbors who aren't good neighbors.
No, I just, I wish, I don't know if you guys were, I know you have pictures and everything, but just standing on the property and seeing it.
Yeah.
And seeing actually, like, that it's not a cottage. I know I said cottage, but like, it's a house, and it has a second floor.
I mean, I looked at the picture, and I pulled up there today, I parked in the front, but I didn't try to go through the back, because there's no way for me to get out and walk through the back.
Yeah, no, I know.
So I stood in the front, looked around, looked at the houses on the right and left side, across the street.
And just seeing it being like a three-family or a two-family already, and then that third floor, and then now it's like already talking about, like, already it's three bedrooms upstairs, or two upstairs, three on the second floor, first floor has it, and then like, it's just, it's a lot. And I just want you guys to really overview that.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, you know, it's 10 bedrooms. Three on the, two on the third, three on the second, two on the first, and three in the cottage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I just...
Which is a lot.
Clarifying, just so you guys know, there's a lot. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Shanay, if you have any questions or comments. I could just point something out. When they purchased this in 1980, it was, we, you'll remember this, but it was purchased from the FDIC. It was a house where drugs were sold. It was a flop house. It was a mess. It was just, it was just in so disrepair. Now, the Ribeiros, along with all the properties, you know, Romeo and Juliet, South Street, the historic building on Middlesex Street, Hanover, Woburn Street, this one here, they've done an amazing job. The property is very well-kept, always put new windows in, new siding. He comes to me for advice on a lot of this. We get it done right, and he's done it right. All this was proven, including the fact that it was bought from the FDIC, and we had someone from the police, you know, talk about how bad that house was back in the 80s. So I think they've done a really good job.
I think most of their concerns are...
Yep. And I understand their concerns.
The occupants.
But it is a tight, it is a tight neighborhood.
I mean, if they're growing in that neighborhood and in that house...
Yep.
I'm sure the objections wouldn't be as loud as they are.
Yep.
You know, but if they're uncomfortable with the way some of the occupants make them feel, they have a right to be heard, so... I'll go back to you again, Shanay, if you have, if you have any encouraging news.
Yeah, I just, I only have two comments. I do recognize that this is a challenging condition, given the existing use and the approved existing use. I would say in response, at least in my opinion, and in response to the comments about adding parking in the rear where the existing lawn area, I think that that would have a negative impact on the site, because it would increase stormwater runoff. The site has very little usable open space to begin with. So I just think that providing the existing parking that they have today is a better outcome than adding parking. That's, you know, my review. The only, I'm like, looking for any, and I know that there's no changes really being proposed today. So the only thing that I could see that might help, but I don't think it would address some of the concerns tonight, is potentially adding like a little bit of landscaping out front, which would prevent an additional car from parking on the effectively paved area that might improve the parking situation a little bit, but that's really the only thing that I could see.
And, and also, in that zone, we don't approve stacked parking.
Yeah, that's, I'm like, I don't really see any parking improvement.
Yeah, they can't, even, even outside of the stacked parking, they can't pave anymore without getting a variance, because there's no more usable open spaces or units on the lot.
Yeah, I don't see that as an option.
Stacked parking is only stacked, right, yeah.
So that's really my only comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I suppose my only one question comment, and I, I don't think this is into play, but just like trying to kind of wrap everything together. Were the decks already there prior?
So the first question was, when do the decks come? Do you know, Mr. Dollar, she wants to know, you know when the decks were built?
Decks what?
Were the decks already a part of that, or was that something that was added?
Oh, I think the decks have been rebuilt over the years, yes. I, I, I don't know. I, I can't, were the decks there?
2015, that were issued since 2013.
2013. All the permits have been issued for all.
That was my question, if that was, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yes. We had to present that at the meeting.
Okay, that's what was my question, if there was a perm of the deck. Okay, thank you.
Can you pull up the parking again? I think I have it on now. Let me see what you're talking about right there. Yep. Yep.
I know you guys want to get on to other things. Is it possible, since it's, I, I don't know if, we can't ask them to take the whole apartment down and the deck, right? Is there a way to add privacy to the balcony? And maybe the stairs have like some kind of privacy, not, not just the open slats, but maybe taller balcony rail, so it's more like a private, almost like a six-foot fence air? You know how people would have?
Maybe like, like a lattice work or something like that?
A lattice, they could still see through.
No, I'm just trying to think of what type of facade you'd put up there.
Yeah, just something, like even like a screen or something, or even shrubbery or something like that. It's just, it's wide open, and for them just to stare over, I mean, absolutely, they're, they're decks and their porches, they're going to do what they need to do. But to have parties on nighttimes and just staring at you, smoking cigarettes, it's just...
This is more, on, so was it on the deck on the back, looking back over?
It's the decks, it's the, yeah, it's the third floor deck, the second floor deck, and then in the backyard as well. I mean, you can have people walking in between the house, which there's a bunch of stuff in the back of the house already, but you can have people walking in the very back. I had a storm that, I think it was maybe two years ago, that my back panel of fence fell down, and they're just staring, smoking cigarettes, making eye contact. It's very creepy, and I actually said, "Can I help you?" It's just uncomfortable. I'm a single woman living in a household, I, you know, I take my house as my sanctuary, it's my place. I feel very uncomfortable. So if anything that there can be done on those porches to give a little bit of some, like, something just to privacy for ourselves, I don't even know, maybe a fence that's a little bit, like, taller in the backyard or something, something just to make it so little bit like taller in the backyard or something, something just to make it so surrounding neighbors don't feel like we're on display would be great. And it's just a thought, just something that's, you know?
Let me see what they have to respond to that. Did you understand what the question was from them?
Yes.
They're looking for some screening up top and around the back?
Well, that's the whole thing with, we started by going for permit for the deck to rebuild the whole thing. And that was what we couldn't get. But I just want the board to understand, you can see in the pictures, there is a fence around the entire property.
Yeah, that's what she said.
Yeah. And we could, yes, we can do something, you know, I mean, even people that sit on their own deck and want to be able to look out. I'm not saying you're going to go up eight feet, but we could address something in, in, you know, some type of a, I don't know, a lattice or something like that that could, could block that. It'd be on the second and third floor. We can't do anything on the first floor, you've got a fence around the property. We could, we could address it for the second and third floor.
It's a chamber fence. We have, I just put a fence up, a white plastic fence around, but it's been a chamber fence. Before that, and that's.
What is it right now?
Right now, we put up a condo, we put up a white vinyl fence.
Okay, so there's a fence around the property.
Yeah. The white vinyls are nice fences, yeah. They're nice fences, the white vinyl.
Yeah, we put up a.
Yeah, I like them, yeah.
For that, for our fence to be down, it's a wooden fence.
Yeah. Because the vinyl will last you longer than the wood, yeah.
But it's a, for the chamber fence, it's blown back, we put so much stuff in the back of that property, pushing it back. So we had to put a, some, because it's a high floor.
So some, some type of screening on the second and third floor decks would be helpful?
Yes, we could do something. I'm not saying it's going to be eight feet, but maybe we could go six, you know, five and a half, six feet. You know, eye level. You know, if somebody's sitting down, you won't see them.
It's our responsibility.
Yeah. Well, we'll address that. We'll make sure that they, they use the deck.
The fence, their fence, the wood fences behind my steel fence was all running out.
Yep.
And they asked to help them build the white, I applied that.
Oh, I see.
I had my.
Okay, 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 okay.
Yep. We can address something on the two decks. Commercial code, residential code is 36 inches, commercial code is 42. We go to 42-inch railings and instead of having open, open ballisters, maybe we could close it in with lattice or something a little more so that you don't see as much. Yeah, you have to remember, you can't go, you can't go six feet because now the guy's got to shovel the deck.
Oh, I understand, I understand. Any of the board members have any further questions?
So on parking, I'm coming to think of, now you know you're in the East End Club, did an amazing TDM job. So don't have to make a condition, but I think, I think the applicants will be understanding that parking is an issue. So if any help to, to help the tenant understand that that's all the parking there is.
Willing to do that.
And be respectful to the neighbor when where they park. That will be very helpful.
All right.
And if, if the applicant is willing to incorporate any TDM like bikes or anything, that will also help to a certain extent. I mean, the, the bus station is just right outside, right? I believe. It's like, there's a bus sign right, like on, on the, yeah, on the post. So I think that that is a resource. Not saying people have more cars, then they will have to park somewhere, but so just, just an idea.
Okay.
How can we start parking right there?
So, yeah, I think, I think just like, like that. Well, that car is on the, on the sidewalk too. Yeah, and then the cars cannot park on the sidewalk. I mean, I think, I think that that's just a city rule.
Yep.
Yep. Because I was looking at Google, there's cars right parked right immediately in front of the building, so.
There is also a, a commercial vehicle and a trailer parked there, like on the Google Street View. You can't park a commercial vehicle there either. These spaces have to just be for residents.
That's what I see as well.
So I'm sure you, you hear that.
Yes, I did.
And we are not the enforcement agency.
No.
So.
Who do they call for that, Peter, when they're parking on the street and everything else?
So it is actually, I don't write tickets, but May Bond is the zoning inspector. So like somebody does a building inspection, she does zoning tickets. So if somebody's parking on the sidewalk or if their commercial vehicle's parked there, she would go to the property, usually start with a warning. We almost never go right to town.
Can you hear what he's saying?
Yes.
So if they're parking a commercial vehicle there or they're parking on the sidewalk in front, you can call the building inspector and they're not allowed to park there. And if.
In front of the pole, like where all of the six blocks, the six spots are, there's so many.
I think here. So you're, oh, yeah, right, so you're talking about on that sheet you have right before.
Same concept, that's owned by the city.
Yep, yep.
So when the parking layout you're talking about, you're talking about the spot that's right before parking spot number one, correct?
Yeah, it's like almost like a seven spot.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so it, I mean, he, he gave you the parking spot layout, so it'd be before parking spot number one, right?
Yeah.
So that would be partially.
This corner.
Yeah, so how do you, how do we do that, parking lot one?
So I think, I think Sinead, Sinead mentioned.
What can we do to stop that just?
Well, we can make into a landscaped area, that's. So that corner, I think members, Galvin mentioned, could turn it into a landscape area so that people cannot, I mean, suppose they can still.
Willing to do that, yeah. Landscape with a telephone, right around that telephone pole to keep somebody from pulling, pushing into the street.
Yeah, yeah. I mentioned there and just right and directly in front of the house would keep an additional car from parking possibly right in front of the house where it's paved today.
So, yeah, so the area in front of the house, you want to use this?
It's small. That sounds like it's, it's minor, but that area you just described and this area here, because it's pretty clear that people are parking directly in front of the house.
Can you hear what she's saying? You have the, she doesn't have a mic, yeah, couldn't you? Okay, there you go, Sinead, right here. So when the parking configuration that you gave, she's looking at the spot that's by parking lot number one, which abuts by the street to prevent from parking there, correct?
Yes, and also directly in front of the house where it looks like cars are parking kind of right against the house along Woburn, Woburn Street. So it's, they're small areas, but maybe adding landscape and curbs there would help from people parking where they shouldn't be parking, basically.
Maybe we can meet with Dylan with a site plan and figure out what they want and then we'll do it.
Those areas are almost definitely owned by the city. The house is basically right up against the public way. It's probably just easier that we have the zoning inspector check on that house and make sure no one's parking there. Because they would have to get a survey done probably to figure out where they could put the landscaping and that would just be so much money for.
Yeah.
I'd like to just point out that the house to the left side there, which one of these ladies lives in, I built that. That was the former Greek restaurant that was on that street. I forget the name of it, it was a little restaurant and then it burnt in a fire. So Mr. Tingas from the Olympia reached out to me and said, would you buy this off me and build something? So we did.
I think the parking, I mean, there, you can always put a planter there. I think the key part is just try not to have people park illegally.
We can do that.
Yeah, I think a planter might.
We could build a, we could build something, a nice planter that's maybe triangular and then fill it with some shrubs.
Yeah, we, we can enforce on the parking issue, but like I think the understanding here is that, yeah, park where they should be parking and not where they shouldn't be.
Do you want to make a motion to put these second and third floor decks to be screened by 42 inches and that we have the parking lot next to parking one, the planter and no parking in front of the building? At least a no parking sign in front of the building?
Our tenants are, they are hard work, very respectful people. They have a kids.
Can you come a little closer to the mic, please? Thank you.
Yes. What I want to say is all the tenants we have on Woburn Street, they are very nice family. They are hard work people. They stay most of the time on the daytime working. They have, some of them have a kids. They are very nice people. And the concern is if the music gets loud after 10 o'clock, if it's some disturbance after 10 o'clock, they have a right to call the police. The neighbors, if they are disturbing the neighbors, the neighbors can call the police. But I can tell on my own, you know, I choose all my tenants and I interview them and I have a referral from the other landlords. So I believe, you know, it's, of course, people go outside for smoking sometimes because they don't want to smoke inside the house. And this is, this is pretty reasonable, right? So I suggest if you have any problems, if people, if you think people, it's looking at your house or your kids, call the police. If the people are disturbing after 10 o'clock, call the police.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because, you know, when I do the contract, the leasing for my tenants, I put all the rules there. And I put in English and I put in Portuguese to make very sure, you know, what they can do, what they're allowed to do in the property, what they're not allowed to do. So that's how I want to say.
I agree with you and I think if you tell the, communicate yourself with the tenants, sometimes they're going to listen to you a little more than having the police come up there all the time.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure you as a landowner really don't want the police showing up at a piece of property that you own.
Of course not, of course not.
So a lot of times if you can emphasize that to your tenants as well, you know?
Yes, yes.
Keep the music down at a certain hour. When they've indicated they've gone over and asked for it, they just don't answer the door.
Of course not.
Either number one, it's too loud, they can't hear the door being knocked on.
Yes.
Or number two, they don't care and they're not going to answer the door. I don't know what the resolution is, but I've seen both sides of that battle happen in neighborhoods that I've lived in and friends of mine have lived in and people who live in this, daily basis.
I don't think they want, they want nobody to call police on them.
No.
Because they are very.
A lot of good neighbors don't want to.
Yes, yes. And I don't want to either, you know? So we never, in all those years that I lived in, I have a tenant, we never have a problem.
Yeah, okay. But I mean, or they could maybe even call you and let them know.
Yeah, of course, they can, they can have my number, they can give me a number.
That might be a good suggestion. They communicate with you and help try to resolve something.
Of course, yeah, you can do that.
We're absolutely looking to be neighborly. We're not looking to team up on you guys. I know you used to live in the property beforehand, so absolutely it's not going to be a lot of crap, but I know you're going to be good people in there, but we're not there to see them all the time. When they're drinking in the back car, they're gunning on the head, they're hitting it up, they go down, screaming, one person falling off a bull's head. You know what I mean? And when they're sitting there bottom clanking and all this kind of stuff, it does get frustrating because you are also very hardworking people.
Yeah, you are the one who lives behind on the condo, right?
We're on the.
Yes. A lot of times in the hall, in the Halloween time, you did parties.
Yes.
All night. You remember?
There was one night, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And we respectfully turned everything down.
Yeah, I never, I never complained anything because to tell you, you know, it bothered me because my bedroom is upstairs.
Absolutely. People are from calling or anything, absolutely, we would have turned that down.
Okay, I can give you guys, I can give you guys my phone number and you guys can call me or text me, yes. And I can, you know, call them.
You love that.
Okay.
Okay, back to the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the site plan, let's see, for 145 to 149 Woburn Street with conditions. So first of all, applicants to add screening to the third floor and second floor balconies to, to enhance the, the privacy of, the separation between the property and the neighbors to address the neighbors' privacy concerns. And a second conditions to.
Parking lot next to one?
Yeah, to, to add a planter or to, to the triangular space next to parking space number one to prevent something from parking there illegally.
So either put a planter there, work with DPD for a landscaping unit?
How about, how about the parking in front of the?
Yeah, in front of the building as well, a no parking.
And, and add a no parking sign in front of the house as to prevent someone from parking there illegally as well. And actually, there is a third condition to work with DPD to, to work on the landscaping.
One thing, I'm sorry, the park, when they're parked directly in front of their house, that doesn't bother any of us because I'd rather them park over there. It's just when they block the sidewalk, so maybe not park so close to the house.
The question is if they're parked in front of their house, if it's part of the, it all depends if it's their property or city property. If it's a city property, I mean, like for example, you can't park on the sidewalk in the city, even though it happens everywhere, believe me.
You can't park anywhere in front of a sidewalk? Not on the sidewalk?
That's what we're talking about, on sidewalk you can't.
Right, so if they don't park on the sidewalk in front of the house, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
It's just a, because they park on.
It's the, it's the one next to parking lot number one.
And they're blocking the sidewalk.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there is just, there's not enough room in front of the house for a car to be parked there. Like Caleb said, there should be a no parking sign on the front of the house.
Okay.
Well, but, but could they park on the road? You can park in the road, right? Like an, as an on-street parking?
Yes, but the first, like, I forget the amount, the feet, the whole footage, the engineer would know off the top of their head is sidewalk, like of a road and it's.
Or, or change, change the condition to no parking on sidewalk.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, there we go.
I mean, they can park in, off the sidewalk, but not on the sidewalk.
Yeah, because looking at Google view, that's what every house has in front of it is everyone's parked like that.
Okay, so do you?
So do we, do we need to look, work on landscaping though? I mean, if you have a planter there, I mean, there's not really any space for.
No. I think the planter will be fine, just the planter and I'll work with DPD to make sure that there would be no parking on that, on that space.
So Peter, the third conditions, work with DPD to make sure there's no illegal parking on, on the lot.
So in that corner piece, Peter, I think he's saying either a planter of some sort.
That's fine.
Any type of landscaping that you and DPD can agree.
Yeah, I'll run, I'll work through with Dylan or Peter over that and get it out of the way, that's not.
The planter, do work with DPD on the planter, yeah.
So basically you have the planter screening and you have the second and third floor decks to be screened, I think Mr. Malo set up to 42 inches, was it?
Yeah, that'll work.
Up to 42 inches.
Yeah, 42 inches, yes, okay. I think that.
So Peter, you got all of them? All right.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by.
Second.
Caleb, motion second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Cheer, bow cheers. Any opposition? Hearing none. So basically the building's, oh, you have a question? I'm sorry.
You're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
The bill's going to stay is hopefully you get the screening on those two decks, block out, block out that parking area. This is the first time this matter came before us, so we didn't have any continuance here, that no mistates. So it seems like when they went to put the roof on, they had the approval from the ZBA and somebody in the city said, wait a minute, you also need the planning board approval, not just, not just the ZBA approval. And I guess they thought back in 2020, they were okay with just the variances. Then they said, no, you still need a site plan. And that's, but brought them here tonight, so. You're welcome. Wish you well. Hopefully they'll give you your number, you can work out concerns. I mean, you know, we all like to have peace and neighborhood. Good night, wish you well. It's going to be easy tonight when I was reading this. And I want to. Something, you're going to be here for something, right? Help me bring Jerry back.
I was going to be neighborly.
So moving along on the agenda, we have other businesses or any comments from further board members? Any board members have any further update from the boards that they sit on?
I just have a community preservation committee update. So I think it was January 25th, the community preservation committee met to deliberate on the 2023 proposals. There was about $900,000 in available funding. There were six total applicants, two applicants ended up withdrawing their application. And so in the month of January at that meeting, the committee voted to, it's basically a recommendation to city council and then city council confirms to allocate that funding. And I went to community housing and historic preservation and the dollar amount for open space and recreation was set aside for future years because there was no eligible applications for open space and recreation. So if there aren't any, there's a required amount and that would get set aside for a future application.
And how, Sinead, how long can that be kind of set aside?
I think it could be set aside in perpetuity.
Really?
I'm pretty sure like it, by law it has to go to that category. So in theory, there would be more available next year for that type of project that is a requirement. I think it's 10% of the total, of the total amount is set aside to each category. And so of the four applicants, they all were able to receive funding, not the full requested amount, but each applicant that was eligible received funding. Yeah, so I think it was a good result.
Thank you. Anybody else have any updates?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have handouts.
Oh, here we go. Probably get a quiz after this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that a copy of the poll, your friend just made, good neighbors?
Ooh, okay.
So you may be aware, or may not be aware, of the governor's bond bill for creation of housing, and it's the Affordable Homes Act, and it's House Bill H4138, and it's before the Housing Subcommittee right now. It's anticipated to be out of committee, that committee this week. It goes, I believe, to the Appropriations Committee and then to Ways and Means. And the, the concern is, the verbiage, and this is, it's a 131-page bill, and there's two little paragraphs in there regarding accessory dwelling units. And obviously, if, you know, we're, we're well aware of the debate and discussion that took place in the city of Lowell over a two-year period regarding the accessory dwelling units. And I've highlighted the wording that is of concern here. And I'm just gonna read two sentences. One of the sentences I've highlighted is, provided however, that no municipality shall unreasonably restrict the creation or rental of an accessory dwelling unit that is not a short-term rental. Then I highlighted, if you flip the next page, another sentence very concerning here, the use of land or structures of an accessory dwelling unit under this paragraph shall not require owner occupancy of either the accessory dwelling unit or the principal dwelling. That, in essence, erases single-family zoning in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Two little sentences buried in a bill. And so at this point, I am aware, the, there's been communication with the state delegation, Senator Kennedy's office, I know a letter is being drafted stating the concern regarding this wording. And I just, I think it's important for people to know what's happening at this point. I think, I believe, the, the idea is to actually have it be a local option, but I'm still now want further definition of what that means, or what the anticipation is, if we have, if it's local option, but it still has to go through a couple more committees. And then this is, this is the governor's bill that she proposed, this is the wording that's in there. It's a bond bill, it's a $4 billion bond bill. Housing is, is obviously a priority here in the Commonwealth. This will be moved along as far as the bill itself. This is an aspect of it that is very concerning. I'm gonna do my best to get the word out to the Northern Millsx Council of Governments, the reps for the other communities, because at the end of the day, they do, you know, a lot of the communities do everything they can to prevent rental housing in their communities. And Lowell has over 50% of its housing stock is rental. And this is very, very, very concerning, and especially when you look at a community that is a university community. And I know around the university, it would be nothing for contractors then to buy single-family homes, put a smaller apartment, and then they can sell it for both of them to be rental units. So I do know somebody contacted, somebody they know that lives in San Diego where this is allowed, and they said, and it's a near university, it's awful what's happened to the neighborhoods. So I just think it's, it's important for us to be aware of it as a land use board, that this is what's in that bill, and certainly feel free to pass that along as a concern. Certainly, if you contact, and again, Senator Ed Kennedy is very much aware of the situation in our state, and our state delegation is, but it wouldn't hurt if they, if they heard from you as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vichy. Any other board members have any further comment? If not, we can make a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Kennedy.
Motion made and.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cheer, bow cheers. We are adjourned, good night, and thank you very much, everyone.